My, my, my clock says nine o'clock. Uh, good morning. Okay, this is a continuation of budget hearings. Persian County Board of Commissioners, today is April 5th, it's 9:00 AM. Public input, no action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Other commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Public comments, anything on Zoom? No public comments? Okay, so I'm, I'm just assuming that you two have met and have this all worked out and we're done?
Cool.
Pretty close.
Okay.
Fifty percent, yeah, yeah.
So I'll explain to you the copies I gave you. This first one is the general fund balance. Um, I went through, we got the final property tax information from the Department of Taxation on the 25th of March. And I had just used last year's in our first round. So this year's, it was up approximately 200,000 from the current year. So that added 200,000 to the general fund. I also then went back to the projections for this year compared to what we had a couple of weeks ago. And believe it or not, our current personal property tax is almost 850,000 being paid this year. And our budget was 612,637.
Oh, that's great.
So that's an additional 200.
I think I paid half of that.
My understanding, just from a brief conversation with Lori, and I'm sure Lacey can answer this. The mines are paying a lot more. It's kind of a catch-up thing from the dead net that has captured, I guess, some things that were being done correctly in the old system. So we're really in this general fund right now about 400,000 to the good for what we have to be for the 4% requirement of the ending fund balance.
Cool.
If you go to the next sheet that I gave you, which is this one, you'll see that all of the ending fund balances by all of the property taxes being refigured, all of our workshop information being refigured. The law enforcement is upside down still by 291,109 dollars. But in total effect, that fund needs 388,000 to meet that 4% requirement. The sheriff and I have met, we went over some things. In law enforcement, I went back and refigured all of the wages for this current year, my estimates, which the first round, we used all of Jerry's numbers. And then I also used all of the payroll projections for next year. So that did cut, you know, this down quite a bit by, by some of that, plus the other reductions that we had made during the workshops. A quick fix is to move 400,000 out of general fund over to law enforcement and then move it to the balance. I also gave you guys some of these. The tentative one is the one that our current property taxes for next year will be, the state says 3,781,519. The second one is a worksheet strictly because I was asked about reduction of some of the cents going to the library and some of the cents going to egg extension. Right now, the library gets .1360 and I cut that in half on this. And then on egg extension, they're currently at .037 cents. I cut that in half to .015. So it roughly takes, if you look at it, it'll take about 200,000 between library and the egg and put it into the general fund.
Which I think is a good thing.
My only concerns is that we do, according to Statch, we have to make sure that egg extension gets enough to be funded for all their expenses. So I went back to the audit book. And last year, in June 30th of 2020, for that fiscal year, egg extension expenditures were about 65,500. Library expenditures for that same period of time were about 263,000. But as you could see by the ending fund balances on your other the library fund has got a pretty good ending fund balance right now.
And then egg.
An egg would have that. Again, this paper does not reflect the reduction of the property taxes yet. Because I didn't, I just did a worksheet so you could see what's what. A couple other small questions that I think we need to maybe decide on is the general fund, Love Lock Fire Department and the ambulance fund, they had asked for additional salaries which would make our contribution for the 65% double that is figured in all of these budget numbers. But I'm getting questioned by the city already if we're gonna do that or not, because they need to put it in their budget if we're going to. And that would be, what did he say, raising from like 500 a month to 1,000 a month, something like that?
For the fire chief or?
Yeah, and I don't know about the ambulance, but that ratio is.
Yeah, but for the fire, I'm sorry, no, go ahead.
Was that for the main positions they're requesting?
No, it would be strictly raising Rodney's wage and raising Marty's wage that the state, I mean, that the city pays and we reimburse 65% of that. But their current monthly wages, I don't know.
And, and right now, the only fire chief that's paid is Love Lock and it's 500 a month and he wants to.
Well, he said 500 to 1,000.
Yeah, and he wanted to go to 1,000. The other fire chiefs aren't paid anything at all. And, you know, we had talked before about giving them something, even if it's, you know, just a small stipend for their work as fire chief. I'm just reiterating that, but like Marty and them, all we're gonna do is pay them more and then they're not going to do their billing still.
Well, I just updated, you guys have your monthly reports from March and I'm a little concerned with their revenues because we budgeted 124,000 to the ambulance fees this year. Through the end of March, there's only been 40,601 dollars collected. We're not even.
Why do we even keep those people that are trying to, were supposedly collecting money? We should be sending them down.
It's not necessarily them though. They can't collect or bill people without the information from the virus.
Right, right.
How could the snag just here? Cause the paperwork's not getting.
It's not getting to those people?
Everything that Sharpe had built, I mean, was made late, but they can only bill what they've been given.
Yeah.
And that's the issue is now they want more money so that they can supposedly do it, but and nothing personally against any individual, but it's like throwing good money after bad in my mind. And maybe what we need to look at is, I don't know, if we need to look at a clerical person, I don't know what we need to do.
We need to look at a full-time person over there that we heard testimony of that they could get this worked out.
Maybe we need to look at another ambulance service coming in and covering.
And that's what that, you know, that committee is supposed to get together and come up with some recommendations. And we do have all the members of it. Karen, did you?
Who was the city appointing?
Um, Jonathan Reynolds and.
I will just throw out that between the Love Lock Fire Department and the ambulance, when paperwork comes into my office, it's a disaster. Their minds are not on their paperwork.
Well, what I'm thinking is we need somebody that this board has authority over, whether it's hiring somebody part-time, and I'm, I'm not abdicating that, but.
Keep throwing money at it.
But getting somebody that is going to do what needs to be done. If, if it had been me and I have been working for the fire department and the ambulance and I wanted to increase my amount of money, I would have worked really hard and made sure that the revenues were coming in, the billing was being done. And I would say to the commissioners then, look, this is what I can do. I put in all these hours and I would have it documented. And I brought in X number of dollars and I can continue doing this, but I would like an increase in my salary or I would like to be put on full-time. It's like saying, okay, we're gonna do this and this happens all the time. We're gonna do this, but it doesn't happen. And I have issues with that.
I have issues with. I understand they're probably working hard, but yes, if they really want paid positions, they would pay more attention to what they're doing and their quality of work would be a lot.
Yes.
Better.
And like I said, then come in and say, okay, yes, this is what I can do.
It's like, well, a concern I have too is we lowered the new ambulance in their fund from 185 to 170. I have doubts that we're gonna even be able to do the ambulance because that's projecting 100,000 in revenue. We're only at 40,000.
Yeah.
Shortfall of 60,000.
We're not gonna be able to do a new ambulance at all. They're gonna have to live with what they have. But, you know, we bought new fire trucks, we bought new command vehicles, we bought, we continue to buy things to improve the operations. And I'm looking at you, Rena, it's not, you know, but we continue to do that.
I got big shoulders.
I know, but I, but we continue to do that and we keep throwing money at something that's not working.
I agree with Carol.
And we gotta get it so it works. And like I said, if it'd been me, I would have shown where it works first and then gone after it.
I think the full-time person over there would help tremendously.
Okay, here's where I am. We need a new jail.
Yes.
We don't have the revenue for this. We need to quit throwing money at things that aren't working and focus on funding a jail.
And we have, we have people wanting to add positions, like in the egg, for instance, does that include a full-time clerk position?
For next year, yes.
And I don't feel that we need a full-time clerk position. We need a sheriff deputy more than we need a full-time clerk.
Well, now the sheriff's budget here with that shortfall has got the two additional people, one for the jail and the one for the investigator position.
No, but I understand that, but you know, the.
Public safety comes before.
Before other things. And then we've got where we have to hire now at least a half-time person to be the director at the community or the coordinator, whatever, at the community center. That's additional funds that we, you know, we've had to shift. Why should we be adding another half-time to ag for something that should be okay the way it is?
Okay, back to the sheriff's department. We have, we have the money situation kindened?
Yes.
If we can transfer that part over?
Yeah, right now I feel that we could put another 400 out of the general fund into law enforcement. It's not gonna give us too much slush in the general fund. But right now, there's what, 610 and that's not including any property tax if, if you choose to take some out of library and some out of ag and put it in general.
And I think we need to do that. And then in the library, they also have positions, they have three full-time library positions that are in the budget, right? One of them that's not filled right now.
Well, the live, uh, the one that's not filled is not a full-time position.
Okay, but that's still in there and we don't have to fill that.
Correct.
And so that gives them a little more of a cushion. Further down the road.
I'll just work real quick here and see that 20 hours a week is the makeup position in the library. So you have the three full-time and then a half-time.
Do we need three full-time people there?
The director's one and then we have two other full-time or two other people.
The library tip.
We, it's something we could look at if they're only going to have service at the door.
If they're not gonna unlock the doors, maybe they don't need three people.
Yeah.
No, really. And also too, we need to be looking at the future here. More and more people are using their tablets and their phones and everything else and electronically reading. Um, so, you know, I'm not saying close the library, that isn't what I'm saying. But I think we need to be looking at some of those things as well. And, you know, the only control we have technically over the library is their budget. So, you know, like their fundings, that's it. But I think we need to make those changes in those tax rates to help out for public safety with the law enforcement.
Agreed.
And it's been a long time.
Well, if I.
That you survived.
If I can interject, my, my concern is not so much the budget that's at hand right now. My concern is the BDRs coming through. I just got four more BDRs from Karen on Friday, but I haven't even had a chance to go through to see what the economic impact would be for us. Um, but when I came in for my first hearing, I brought just one BDR that was gonna cost my agency probably upwards of $50,000, which is not budgeted. So my, my concern, I, yes, I'm concerned about this budget as I always am, but my concern is about the bigger effects that the state.
The unfunded mandates are. Yeah.
One thing I might remind you of is this little bit of extra slush that we're collecting currently right now on personal property tax probably isn't gonna happen anymore. This is a catch-up thing. So just FYI.
Well, we have to be.
Well, it should, the amount should stay about the same. It'll just be, you know, because that was Bill's achievement that got missed.
I was gonna look and see, cause for next year, the state is only projecting like 543,000 dollars for personal property in the general fund. So we're at 850 right now. So they're, you know, we are higher this year, but I.
Why would that change that much? Just?
There was an issue with the old system to the dead net system and the dead net system is collecting and doing things correctly.
Which should be good in the future.
But again, some of the payments being made currently are catch-ups.
Catch-ups and there will be catch-up next year.
Right.
When the salmon farm starts going, do we have any idea what the revenue will be from?
I don't know, Sheila. I don't know if even Lori would know this time.
Well, and hopefully our sales tax will go up as long as they take in, they take delivery of their, in Persian County.
And I would think that if, if our sales tax goes up, that it should be put in a fund for the law enforcement center so that we can start figuring out how to fund that. Because we don't have the extra money to make a payment on anything right now.
No, you don't. And those are things that we really need to do.
And just, we need to look forward and figure it out.
On the meeting that Rena and I had on Friday to try to come up with some creative ways to get some income, but it'd just be moving, moving money from one account to the other, but just for services that we do for other entities within the county, so.
So like fingerprinting and different things, do some of those rates need to go up a little bit? And then, and then they're not gonna generate thousands of dollars.
My, my, my proposal was for some of the things we do for like the DMV because the DMV gets reimbursed from the state. When we do hundreds of VIN inspections every year and those take an average about 10 to 15 minutes apiece. So I mean.
Once you get there.
Yeah, yeah, that is, yeah, travel time or anything like that. So, um, you know, there's those things, um, when we send a deputy out with the code enforcement officer, we send them out with animal control, we send them out with, you know, these other entities and those kind of things, so.
And see, some of those would be just inner movement in the general fund. And with DMV, you'd almost have to have a state MOU with them to get reimbursed, you know, like, they're not gonna wanna do that.
The state's not gonna do that.
Right.
Couldn't we, when you do VIN inspections, couldn't we just charge the person directly?
I don't believe so.
I'm just asking the question. Like, for instance, I call you for a VIN inspection and you come out and I pay you 10 bucks. Or if I go to the sheriff's department and bring the vehicle there and you, you know.
I don't know what the legality is about. Not a DMV.
So. It's a nice question.
Yeah, that's a bit of my knowledge base.
So redoing these changes on the, the tax rates that we're proposing and and then moving about 400,000 from the general fund to that, to law enforcement, that will put us in balance with that and we'll be okay.
I'm pretty sure, Carol, the way I was just from.
And then that gives you an additional person in the jail, additional deputy and then.
Investigator.
Oh, best, sorry, well, investigator. And then, um, vehicle wise, where are we on that? Was there a vehicle in there?
There was, but I think those were taken out in the, in the little of the option tax, so.
Okay.
So he's got what, 10,000 in his capital outlay to cover the overage, cause two vehicles is 134,000 out of option tax and he figures 144,000 to get them all outfitted and.
So that gives you the two vehicles then, okay.
Well, and then there's one, the jail vehicle that's supposed to be purchased this year, we're gonna have to move to next year.
We're probably not gonna be able to take delivery of that.
Delivery has to be by June 30th or it's gotta go.
It's not ready.
What's, it's too even, too late to order. Like, if, if I were to even order it today, the company would make it insert it's 90 days out on.
Yeah.
So that's gonna put us in a, too, too close to.
So does, if that's done for next year, that gives him the jail plus two other vehicles?
Correct.
Okay.
I would take the projection for this year and lower it.
Right.
And then increase next year. And then we're gonna have to do that on his radio system also coming out of the building fund because he's waiting on a call, but it looks like it'll be July before it's all here. And again, it would be lowering the projections for this year and just adding that amount to next year. No change in the overall line. It's just from one year to the next year. If you, I mean, I think it should be approved by you guys to do that.
And then we're gonna have some unfunded mandates coming up.
And you have no idea what those are gonna be.
And are we gonna have any money in the budget? Are we gonna have fines to, to take care of them?
Not right now.
That's, like I said, that's my concern for next year or for the next fiscal years when they.
Yeah.
Cause some of them, they wanna start obviously July, some they wanna start January. So, no, depends on when that happens. And with each one of them, like, there's three of them that are gonna require new programming interfaces with our CAD system and all of those are gonna require training. Um, and then there's a couple that are, there's one that they're going to try to change the minimum qualification system applies to that fee, which is gonna make it harder for us to get viable applicants. So.
You were talking about, you wanted a records clerk because of your cameras and video stuff like that?
Yeah, for all our body camera stuff, all of our, um, reports, all of our, um, records that we have to send to the state currently, they're changing from UCR to NICers. So that transition is currently in the works. Um, and we were able to get some grant funding for that and then through the, uh, the program in the, uh, in the building fund, we were able to pay for the rest of that, but that's gonna require training as well. Um, those are things we're looking at right now.
The system that Michael got, where it takes the body cam footage and puts it on CD.
Well, I'd like to get that, but I didn't budget for that, cause that machine itself was $12,000.
Well, you gotta grant for that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna try and go for a grant, but I didn't even put it in my budget because right now we do.
I'll have to ask him what grant. Do you know?
You gotta do a pullback.
Okay, so we could try the same thing.
We could, yeah. I don't think they have their next meeting till September. Cause anything over $10,000, it has to go to the full more.
Right.
So. But yeah, and then our computer's amounts of public records requests we get in for cases and order cases and information and those kinds of things that the under sheriff and I have been trying to mitigate most of that.
Oh, that one's gonna have to wait till we get some money.
And that one, if we were able to charge more, we could probably fund that charge, but the state, the, the state mandate, you can't, you can only charge a certain. Just like sheriffs, when we, when we go to serve paperwork up, up north and stuff, we lose money on, on those paper services, but I can't charge more than what the state allows. Then I have to go.
Public record, that's pretty much free.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, anybody can say, yeah, I, I need to, I need to get this for free, cause I'm in the janitor hardships or whatever.
And I never even knew that existed until I became a commissioner. I was totally ignorant of all that, of what's paid. Cause I always paid my own bills, no matter how hard it was. Or if I had to get a second job or whatever, I'm, whatever, yeah.
I have two tabs to look at if you just know what to share.
Yeah, I think that'll work.
Yeah, just, just for reference, last year, we, uh, since July 1 of last year till current date, we've already done 140 minute inspections, which averages out on the low side of, if they're only 10 minutes apiece, it's 23 hours that we spent just doing stuff with the DMV.
Well.
It's not a huge amount, but every, that cost will help, but.
Yeah.
It's not gonna help it out to do much.
I made a note to ask Bryce if it's something that we can just.
Right.
You know, and I realize some people then will start bringing their vehicle to the sheriff's department. You know, and I realize some people then will start bringing their vehicle to the sheriff's department for the VIN inspection, but there could be one charge for that versus.
Well, it still, it still takes us five to seven minutes, uh, you know, sometimes upwards of ten minutes if there's issues with that too, so.
Yeah.
It just depends.
Okay. Alrighty, well, good job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if we could go to tab nine, which is senior center, I have a, a correction to make. And it's on the capital outlay sheet. You get there all.
Yeah, sorry, I'm. I had, I had a week off.
So I have on there, you can see where I have, uh, what, four items, meat slicer, food processor, immersion, immersion blender. We can scratch all three of those. Uh, so we're saving five, six thousand dollars right there. Uh, and the reason for that is it's, uh, and I'll talk about this at our meeting on Wednesday is those items have been uh, or will be funded in a grant.
Wonderful.
And then the washer dryer combo, that was, there will not be covered in the grant. And I really think that needs to be two thousand, not fifteen hundred, so if we could leave that in there. You'll do with that, Rena?
Yeah.
And the other one I have is under TV district, which is tab fifty-one. In, under, uh, surface and supplies. We have, uh, association dues of six hundred yet to be spent this year and that will be spent. But what we, or what we, what I guess probably I didn't put in there is any money for travel and, uh, the meeting this year is in Salt Lake, so I, I need to have some money in there for travel. For this year, it's in May.
So how, how would you go?
See, oh, I would drive, it's just.
So just.
Why the Salt Lake, I wouldn't. So, I mean, a thousand dollars, that, that's high, but.
How many days is the conference?
Three.
Right, so three.
Well, it's travels, just getting there and back. But conference dues are paid for in that six hundred.
So what about seven hundred?
And that's, I'm fine with that.
So seven hundred and travel?
Yeah.
You're not gonna zoom.
I have no idea what it, what, you know, mileage wise here in Salt Lake is, I don't.
It's about, let's see.
Yeah, you just went that way. It's by a little over five hundred miles, yeah. So. Seven hundred, it may go over a little bit. Thank you.
So other than the fire department and ambulance, are there any other departments we need to look at?
One other change that Bryce had contacted me on, and I was hoping he would be here. He asked to raise the public guardian starting wage from what he had to forty-five thousand as the post salary.
And what?
That's under VA?
That's, yeah, one dash twenty-eight. So it increased that budget just a little bit, um. He originally. Yeah, and he asked to raise it to forty-five, see, set.
So getting back to the fire department and the ambulance, I don't think at this point in time we can raise their, their stipends.
They're gonna bring the money in or.
That's just me.
Basically pay the stipend and they want to a grant writer that hasn't done anything, we're paying. I mean, if they really want their stipends raised, then they probably ought to perform a little better.
Karen, I haven't looked at the agenda thoroughly. Is Mike Hydaman gonna do anything? Give a presentation this time or we haven't heard anything, okay?
He's back. I saw him in the store.
Oh, yes.
So for the tax rates, we just do that when we do our annual tax rate? You know, the changes to the library and egg.
Right, it would be as of July first.
Yeah, so there's nothing else we have.
But I have to put that in all the state forms, so I need a, an authorization today, which way you wanna go with it.
Well, I'm in favor of it. I can only speak for myself, so maybe need a motion on that. I don't know if. We can't.
You guys can tell her to do it and then there'll be a resolution later on that okay, it's the tax rate, but yeah, no, you can't do much. I agree with it.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so.
It's not where we can make a motion.
So we'll go the half on library and half on A and then move that additional amount up to the general fund, correct?
Yeah.
And then, um. You're okay with me moving the four hundred thousand from the general fund to law enforcement to get rid of balance?
Yes.
Yes.
And then with this tax rate adjustment on library and A, it'll put a little more in the general fund.
Nothing wrong with that.
So then, I guess the only other thing is about the fire chief and the DMV switch, is yes or no?
I'm a no, but that's me. I don't see where we can do that at this point in time.
What would you put it in?
Increasing the fire chief and the ambulance from what, the, I don't know, Rodney was five hundred to a thousand, I don't know what. That increases our sixty-five percent reimbursement.
First one's doubled too, but I don't remember.
I don't remember what first was. Cuz that's paid by the city. And then the senior center changes and the TV changes. And then the A position, are we gonna leave it as is or what do you wanna do about that?
I, I, I think it should be half time, but that's just me.
And I don't agree with that.
Unless we get some cooperation from that office.
And we don't know about the vehicle, cuz.
Anything, but it's supposed to be delivered before any time. I know he's got an order, but I have to not have any.
Yeah, but whether we're gonna own it or.
UNR.
Or UNR, or he was gonna check on all that.
Well, if you and R's gonna own the, why are we paying for it?
Yeah, that's, that's just it.
I've not heard anything. I know that he gave me a pre-estimate, so I could, you know, do that in the bottom number for spending this year, but that's all I know.
So for the ag position, I know that they have more, um, for each clubs and stuff and maybe three quarter time, but I don't know.
I had that question too, especially since Lynn was doing that job.
Yeah, and I don't understand if Lynn was doing that job, why does we need another person to do that job?
I just think that there needs to be some justification as to whether there's added.
Case loads or something, yes.
But you increased it to forty-five thousand, that's.
And so, yeah, so if you take that responsibility from Lynn, then what does she do?
Yeah, well, I know she does minutes for a lot of the committees and stuff like that. I mean, she's real busy with that.
Forty-five thousand or, I mean, if Lynn was handling it already and doing the minutes.
And doing her job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that was one of my biggest, it's like, okay, why? And then upping it from thirty-eight?
Thirty-two five, thirty-two five to forty-five.
That's ridiculous.
They didn't. The investigator.
It's an investigator.
No, no.
The investigator and then another jail.
Well, and I'm not advocating for increases in salary because I know the funding that the county has, but it is, it's hard for any of us to get it for you. But I, and I would rather see the money, the forty-five thousand for a public guardian because we're gonna start negotiations next year.
Go into salaries.
Go to salaries and keep the people that they do have.
Yeah.
And maybe next year, year after, if the revenue will, when it starts increasing, then yes, maybe a part-time public guardian.
Yeah.
Because if you look back, I don't know that we may have a few more, uh, people within guardianship, but we used to move that a bit, man, and that too. They did it on their own and they actually, they did get assistance from the DA's office, but they did it on their own and they their, their time from the guardianship, uh, kids. And then the DA decided that they were gonna bow out, take it over. I just don't think it needs to be a public position, but we've got, I mean, we've got a budget issue.
So we're gonna change that now?
So let me just tell you, somebody's gotta tell the DA that, somebody's gotta tell library their tax rate's getting cut, somebody's gotta tell A their tax rates are. I need to have a conversation anyway, so.
Um, do you wanna see if Bryce can come down?
Sure.
Cause we might as well get it on.
Yeah.
And then did we add any other positions or do any other things like, you know, other than that?
I don't think we added anymore. I know Chris always calls each department heads, sees if there's gonna be an extra.
Right, but I've not that, but.
You know, a couple of those, and I have to go one by one.
But those were, that was the only position.
Yes, we interview Thursday.
Okay.
How, just curious, how many applicants?
And you'll see on the agenda for Wednesday, I had to, to bring Perry in at a higher step to get her fourteen dollars an hour.
I know, it's, it's really sad.
Experience, but obviously not in my office. It's, it's hard.
And you hired Perry?
So we got Jennifer and Perry.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's awesome. That's great, um.
Anyway, I'm not aware of any others, Carol, I think that's it.
Okay. I'm just trying to think. I'm also thinking about the community center, uh, position, we haven't had any applicants for that.
Have we had any applicants for it yet? I have one and at three thirty Friday afternoon, called me and said, no.
Well, and I'm wondering, okay, should that be a full-time, I'm throwing this out, should that be a full-time position? And half of the position is, is helping with the fire department and the ambulance reporting.
That's a good idea.
But they report to us, by that I mean.
I agree. That might be a great idea.
Because then you could have it covered at the community center and they could work on the other stuff.
Because you don't need to be at the community center exactly, you know.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just, I threw that out, I need.
That is actually a good idea.
Was he up there, Karen? Was he up?
So if. I think the wage we have right now in community center is a higher level than.
It was what Dixie agreed to, what was negotiated.
So the, the total with benefits and everything is like thirty-seven thousand, so if you made that full-time, you'd have to add another thirty-seven thousand to the general fund expenses.
Take away that grant writer.
Yeah.
She's not writing grants.
True.
He said yes. Because that would be, yeah, I would think, uh, that would be the best possible way to fix the, the community center and the ambulance, maybe it would get done and maybe we get revenue for the ambulance.
Just long as they're held responsible.
Well, their, their salaries based on what they bring in, based on the salary, what they bring in. Is Bryce coming? But what are your thoughts about that, making the competitive, commu- community center slash record? I mean, something, I don't know what. Or just admin clerk, you know, but doing the ambulance.
Somebody that would make, get sure the billing gets.
Yes, yeah.
And that person can work with Marvie and the only thing I would ask is not to maybe get a.
Yeah.
But I think it.
So if you did do that, is that ambulance person gonna have to be located in the fire department? Records and everything?
I, you know, I, I'm not quite sure, I know. I think that the fire department would have to take the records, everything to this person to bill. And that they would have to have access to that.
Send, send the reports to Charlotte.
But you know, the logistics of it exactly, no, we, that have to be worked out. But I'd rather see the person actually physically located at the community center.
Right, and here's past when Nancy Bales did it, she did, yes, she was doing it in the fire department. Right, and here's past when Nancy Bayles did it. She did, yes, she was doing it in the fire department.
Doris Bridges did it.
They weren't. So it is something.
But the only problem is, is they have to cooperate.
Yeah.
And, and the cooperation is where we're going to have issues. Um, because they need to give, do their paperwork.
Well.
Well, they have to have access to get the paperwork, you're right.
Yeah.
And be able to enforce it where people went, but they're.
They're supposed to be, like Larry was, they're supposed to be inputting those reports into that system so that this admin person would just need to have access to pull those reports.
And then also.
Getting those reports.
The, the billing for like the interstate.
Yeah.
You know, any of those things that need to be built and, and just.
Yeah. A half-time person doing that would be great.
Anyway, that's.
Can we have that on the agenda?
Well, not this one.
The one where I'm gone?
Yeah.
The one where you're gone?
I'll be, I'll be.
You'll be zooming?
Attending that by Zoom. So is that something we, want me to give six to the council?
Yes.
Okay, so what are we doing with the ag position? Are we still talking about that?
Halftime. And I'm halftime too.
Don't agree.
But.
Everybody got this.
Yeah, but it could, it's, it's a budget by itself. I don't know if you want to still leave, it could still be left there because right now it's. They have to. I, I want to, I don't, I don't know.
Okay, so the community center position, we want to go to full-time. Full-time.
Full-time, halftime.
Well. Center halftime billing for the ambulance.
Or just billing and fire department, yeah.
Ambulance billing clerk.
But. But it could be, it could be a records clerk.
Record clerk.
Yeah.
And, and you know, just records clerk and then we, that's what we assign the records clerk to do.
Pay that out of the general fund though, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And they would just make sure that everything that needs to be sent to Sharpe, so like that's our record.
Yeah. And this records clerk community center would be paid all out of the general fund.
And then depending on how much work there is, because I don't have a clue, I mean, it's going to be a, a lot of catch-up. But maybe some of it could be helping the sheriff's department with their records too. It could be a public safety records clerk. I mean.
How could it help the sheriff's department?
Well, he wanted some help with the.
The files.
The files and, and that, but I'd have to see any of that first.
All right. If we do this, to me, that person's going to be, have their hands full.
Yeah. At least to catch it up a lot, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we have to outs- outs- outsource the billing because it's so complicated with the codes and everything for the insurance companies to get reimbursed and Medicare and, and all that. That, I mean, that's one reason why the hospital stopped doing it too for us and, and.
And I think Sharp does a good job.
It's just getting them the information.
And, you know, Marty had mentioned that they have to provide more information to Sharp, but I, I'm not so sure that we would have had to do the same with Remsa because things change. And Remsa was probably just handling things for us.
They probably filled in a lot of the dots for us, yeah.
Okay, so on my notes so far, I have general fund moved the four hundred thousand to law enforcement. No on raising the fire chief and EMS wages. Yes on reallocating library and ag extension property taxes. Senior center capital outlay changes, EB travel change. Ag position leave as is for now. And community center position bumping to full-time to be half records clerk and a half community center. So the public guardian thing, I think is the only thing.
Because what is the, the, what is it, two percent raise yearly? Or personal?
Merit is two and a half until you get to the extended. When you get any extended, it's two percent. And then there's the salary increase of one and a half percent onto my first. So some are getting four, some are only getting three.
Then we have unclassified people that continue to get the two and a half. And the merit of what, not just the. They continue to get it even though our classified people come to an end.
Correct.
They only have so many steps that they can go.
And Lacey and I are on that end of being maxed out right now.
Rain and I won't get any more increases unless.
Right.
The legislature decides that our base.
We're counting on us in January because the legislature hasn't raised it since, what, twenty eighteen?
I have a hot seat. A hot seat? Yeah, we're going to, we're talking about you.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning. You must have court. I do have court.
So they have some questions about the public guardian.
Okay. I was just on the phone about the public guardian.
And I, I did tell him Bryce that you requested to raise the wage on that.
Yeah.
Now they have questions.
Okay.
So our question is, the funding is, we have issues with funding in the general fund.
Right.
And so, um, I know Lynn's been doing a lot of public guarding, you have too. Have the public guardian cases gone up is? I mean, can we continue for another year without a public guardian?
Uh, yeah, and I had, you know, I had talked to Rain and, um, I'd made the request and then during my budget hearing. Um, I, I heard that there were some big shortfalls and there's problems with the budget, so I, I said, well, maybe the commissioners ought to deny these types of requests for a year and see how things shake out next year, so. So you're okay if we have to do that? Yeah. Yeah. I mean. Yeah. We've got to do, we've got to. Only pieces of the pie go around, but, you know, I. When I've, when I look at, well. If you're going to deny my office this position, then it should apply across the board. That's how I, that's what I think. If there are problems with the budget and, and if the commission can't meet that, then you shouldn't single out my office and expect us to be on sheltering the burden that we've carried for six years. And not have this position and be down at deputy district attorney. And then some other office comes along and they're increasing their budget every single year and you don't say no to that office. One of the things we're looking at is. It's half fire department, half community center. And how to fund that. Fire department would be utilized to. Do the paperwork, get the billing back up to par where it's supposed to be, and then the other half of that, of course, is community center, which we have, as you know, as a. A part-time, yeah, coordinator. Right. Yeah.
The, the other ones that we left in was for the sheriff's department, though investigator and one more for jail. So.
Well.
And that, and I.
This is the great thing about public guardian. Anyone can be the public guardian. Anyone. It doesn't have to be the district attorney.
Right.
Uh, the district attorney doesn't have to be the public guardian. Which you end up doing a lot, I know.
Well, he's willingly taking it on.
Yeah. So what I'm saying is, the district attorney could say no, find someone else to do it.
Yeah.
Because if you're singling out my office because I don't have a problem with it, but then you're saying, oh, well, we're, we're going to get this office an investigator. Or we're going to give them another deputy, then yes, I would have a problem with that.
Well, the jail one we need because we have that report that we don't have adequate coverage in the jail. Has.
The investigator.
Yes, that's. Are there? It's, is the caseload increased enough and stuff or? Are you getting your reports timely and all of those things?
The sheriff's office is over a hundred reports down.
And the police department, I know, is down too.
Yeah.
Is that because they, and I.
I don't, I don't, I mean, I'd like, I'd like to hear, I don't know, I don't know if hiring an investigator would alleviate that crunch. Um, everybody's busy, everyone's busy in crime, but the thing about the investigator is, when I hear the word investigator, I'm thinking. Um, an expertise in investigations and a true detective and one isn't going to really make a difference. We have, um, the Nevada Department of Public Safety, Major Crimes Division.
Which do it.
That we call, rely on so that they can investigate major crimes. It's just a matter of the sheriff's office reaching out to them and actually doing it. There's probably four or five cases that the DA is investigating right now. That are local here? Yeah, and hiring one investigator isn't going to alleviate that.
Well, plus, there's the conflict sometimes in the investigations that you can't do it for your own department to get, you know, what it is.
Right. So I, I don't know, I, I, I don't see how that would go.
Is.
From my perspective.
Is there a need for just a deputy versus an investigator?
Well, I think that they've had the option to hire five deputies, haven't they? They can't fill the position, so those are open positions. You know, if they were to hire an investigator, I think they would probably just promote from within.
Uh, and then that leaves another deputy.
So that, that doesn't alleviate the report crunch either. I, I don't think hiring an investigator, at least from my perspective, and I didn't listen to the sheriff's presentation, so. Um, I'm open to change my mind, but I don't think that's going to alleviate. The report crunch and it's definitely not going to, I, we have the Nevada, the, the Nevada Department of Public Safety to conduct those investigations, so.
The Department of Public Safety charges.
No.
No? Then why are we paying, why would we pay for one?
I don't know.
I think it's a way to promote somebody from within. Like promoting them to a sergeant.
Facing, the general fund we're facing, why would we hire somebody and pay the extra salaries and benefits?
Right.
If the Department of Public Safety does that without charging this money?
So the comment that I made to read is, if we're facing this budget crunch and if the commission is serious about getting to jail, then these requests for extra positions, they probably all ought to be frozen for a year.
Didn't I say that?
And just, just not do it, apply it across the board. That way, you can't single out the DA's office and say, well, we're not going to hire a public guardian, but we are going to hire an investigator for the sheriff's office, so we're going to hire an extra person here in, you know, X office. It's not only fair, but I think it's just sound, it's a sound approach to the budget right now. Given some of the other necessities that. Have to be addressed.
I didn't thoroughly read that, why, I looked at the report that we got from the state on the jail. And, but I didn't read it word for word. I looked at some of the recommendations and one of them was.
Full-time coverage.
You full-time, which they're supposed to have.
And they should have full-time.
Because they're supposed to have twenty-four hours.
Probably one of those needs, that's what I want. Investigators want.
Yeah.
A public guardian is what, because I can continue to do that and Lynn can continue to do that. Um, but yeah, having another jailer, that's probably, that's a need. It's a need, not a. Yeah.
Well, I would say change the budget to. Take out the investigator and just leave the jailer in there. And hold off a year for. All other positions and see what happens.
Well, not, I mean, all new.
All the new position, new, new positions. And we need to figure out. Hopefully more tax revenue comes in and we can figure out how to fund a jail in the next thirty years.
Well, there's some things that are coming down.
I was hoping we'd get it started before I was out of office and the, the rate were going and it's.
We're going to pay for it, so.
Yeah, I know.
I know Tom, he made me a bet before he retired. This was like six years ago. He said, I'll bet you once that they don't even break ground before I retire. And I said, when are you going to retire? He said, in about five years. And I said, you're wrong. Oh, yeah. Where are you, where are you taking him to lunch? Right. Right, so, and he reminded me of that. But it's not, it's not the commission's fault. It's, uh. We have to find a good site. We're still in the process of doing that and, you know, you guys have to figure out how to fund it.
We're not.
Oh, yeah.
No.
And if these projects come in, like they're supposed to, that will help.
Yes.
But we can't rely on that money today.
We can't spend it now until we.
Well, and it has to be sustainable. It's not just a one-time shot of its numbered dollars. It has to be continuing.
Exactly.
So. Okay, thank you.
So nobody gets their new first, no?
Sorry.
No, we're sorry. It's, it's a crunch. It's, it's bad, but. Oh, um, a couple of things. So we're looking at cutting in half the library, um, tax rate and the ag tax, tax rate. And then, um, VIN inspections for the DMV. Could the sheriff charge for those just? Outside of DMV? I mean, like, could he put, and I'm just picking a ten-dollar fee?
Yeah.
Um, or put a fee for VIN inspections?
Yeah.
Would we have to go through DMV or anything?
To do a VIN inspection to go?
No, to get approval to charge for it.
Uh, off the top of my head, no, but that's something I have to take a look at.
Okay. Because we, we need to.
And it's not like it's a big money raise.
No, but it's just something.
Well, it's, yeah, it's for their time and that's a little bit out of, you know, the scope of. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So Bryce, do we have to do, I know we have to do a resolution every year for the ag extension tax rate? Since we're changing the library, do we have to do a resolution for that too, or is that one that commission has authority to?
Commission, the commission has authority to do it, but a good way to go about setting that is through a resolution.
Okay.
And we'll have to do the resolution for the entire tax rate.
And those have to do that ag one separately, so do we do a library one separate?
That ag is, is statute, yeah.
So do the overall tax one and the ag one, we should be good.
I think so.
Okay.
Because our overall taxing will have, I mean, it's a breakdown.
And we can also comment that we are changing that rate for the library.
Okay. So. That's it?
Well, okay, so. So here's, here's my question. The community center director, whatever you want to call it, and still adding halftime record, keeping records clerk? I think that's still important to do. So bringing more funding for the ambulance and everything else.
So the two I have no on, then would be public guardians and investigators, sheriff's office. Those are the only other rules that I.
Well, and then the ag one, we, if we're freezing, that would still be halftime.
Yeah. So if we want that to happen, we're going to leave it as is.
Uh, you could probably leave it as is because the budget as is, but we're, we're freezing and we need to put on the agenda that we're going to freeze.
I don't think any other departments requested a, I don't, a part-time or a full-time.
No.
No.
Same as about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
That's a lot of money right now. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Bryce.
Anyway, go get them. That's, that's yours too, for real.
Anything else? Public input. No action may be taken automatically under this item of the agenda until a matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda. As an item upon which action will be taken. Public commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Any public comments? Justin. Hearing done, meeting adjourned.
So I'll take care of the library. I didn't even know about the tax rate.
I'll go see Steve.
I'll go see Steve.